So, um. Mr. Frederick?
You're up.
All right, the first item I have is, let's say, 8A, which is discussion regarding ordinance related to Chapter 2, Article 3 of the Municipal Code of Ordinances. You have received a draft of an ordinance that was requested in order for the council to appoint the comptroller or treasurer. This is just a draft. It's meant to see whether or not y'all believe any revisions are required, and if so, we will make those and bring them back to you at the next meeting for approval.
I have two suggestions for amendments to the draft. First of all, thank you Frank for taking the lead on doing that. The two revisions, and I'll state them and I'll provide them to you, Ryan, in order to, so they can be put into the body of it. The proposed Section 2-141 states that the office of comptroller is hereby created, and that's the end of it. I would add a sentence in there that says, quote, "For purposes of Mississippi Code, Section 21-9-29." And that's, for everyone's sake, that's the code section that talks about the duties of the city manager. The comptroller is the city treasurer. There's a question, the word comptroller does not appear in the chapter dealing with the council manager form of government. Instead, the word treasurer is used, and I'm just clarifying that for our purposes, the comptroller is the treasurer under state law. And then the second amendment would be under Section 2-144 that talks about the duties of the comptroller. I have no changes to the duties that are listed. I would simply add a sentence at the end that says, quote, "The comptroller shall be the head of the city's finance department," end quote.
So that is at the end of 144?
No, of Section, yes, of Section 2-144. And I'll hand you my, what I would put out.
And Ryan or Stephen, one, maybe you can answer the question. The stuff I've been reading on, I always see city clerk slash treasurer. So we actually have two positions here. We have the city clerk and we have the comptroller.
Yes.
So how is that gonna affect, the city clerk will still be handled through the city managers?
Right. They're two separate.
So it won't be a combined city clerk slash comptroller?
No, whenever, when I say "we," whenever this staff came on within the last two years, a lot of municipalities treat the city clerk and treasurer as one and the same because the city clerk is the official keeper of records. After doing research and talking with the state auditor based on the duties that were performed by Ms. Kennedy, as well as the duties performed by the comptroller, they agreed with our opinion at the time that they were separate positions, and so we treat them as such.
Do we need a comptroller handling the treasurer?
I don't think so. They'd be the same.
Same.
In my humble opinion, they're the same. It's the same position.
Right, ma'am.
Is this that, is this that draft, the draft to move it under the city council?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, so everybody just clearly understand here, I am a firm believer in the city manager form of government, and I realize that's what the people have asked and wanted for, and so I'm not gonna support moving the comptroller's position under the authority of the city council.
It's still gonna be the city manager form of government. It just gives the comptroller the freedom to speak to us.
I'm not, I'm not for moving it under the council because...
Are we gonna vote on it anyway, even if you don't?
It won't be tonight.
I mean, are we going to move forward?
If y'all outvote me, y'all move all you want to, but I, I'm just saying for the record, I'm not gonna support putting anything under this council, 'cause that's what a city manager is for. And I don't wanna, where does it end after this?
Well, it's a system of checks and balances for our finances. We had a $14 million deficit, and we need a system of checks and balances.
We have a system of checks and balances.
No.
They didn't follow through. You had a comptroller, you had an attorney, and you had a city manager. Just because they didn't do their job doesn't mean that that has to be moved, in my opinion. It is strictly my opinion.
And I respect your opinion. We had someone come and talk to us at our last meeting who pretty much has this type of position, and...
Yeah, but he's elected. That's not exactly apples to apples, 'cause he's an elected. He's not, he's not appointed by the board of supervisors.
Agreed.
So, but, I mean, and I've been doing a lot of thinking about it, 'cause as you know, when it, when you first mentioned it, I really wasn't far, and you brought some real valid points to it, and I've been trying to check it out, and I know Gochet went to this, they appointed theirs at one time, and they're back to the other way, because it's, when you have the other one, you have a lot of personalities, and I know we can go either way. We've discussed that, so, you know, but, and to be honest with you, and I told Mr. Parker earlier that, you know, if we voted on this today, I'd, to be honest with you, I didn't know how I would vote, one way or the other, so I'm kinda glad we got another two weeks to think about it, because it is an important decision.
It is.
And it's, and there's valid points both ways. Jennifer's comment about the checks and balances, I love that part of it, but I, I'm really concerned about the conflict of personalities.
Scott, what struck me, and kind of is informing my position on this, is it became apparent when we had the first budget meeting after the rest of us took office the first time, that the comptroller, I guess it was also the city clerk, but the comptroller at that time, it became apparent, my opinion only, that he couldn't do his job. And the, the jobs, the duties that were having to be done were, were being undertaken by the then-city manager. If the power had been on this council at that time, and I'm not saying that there, you know, there may have been health issues involved and so forth with, with the prior comptroller, but, long story short, this council could have acted at that point and gotten somebody else in here had they chosen to do so. We were obviously prevented from doing that because we would've had to kill two birds with, with basically two stones. We'd had to get rid of a city manager in order to get rid of a comptroller. I don't think I was ready to do that at that point, but, you know, this, I do see the benefit of the flexibility for the council should a situation like that arise, that we saw. Hopefully, that will never happen again, and that need will, will never pass, but, you know, that's, that's weighing heavily on me about the flexibility that council would have, should that could've...
But per the job description that we're gonna discuss later, it's still gonna be the city manager that puts forth a budget to the city, and...
Correct.
But we will, I guess, the information that we need to obtain to do that would come through the comptroller?
And again, that's what I was expecting out of the comptroller, you know, to answer questions about particular line items, 'cause I, I literally was, was a deer in the headlights that first budget cycle, and, and I, you know, I think a lot of us couldn't get questions answered, and I think even at the time, Mike Mangum was, was challenged to provide information, 'cause, of course, he was new to the job at that time as well. So there was a lot of dependence upon the prior comptroller, and we just couldn't get the answers and the information that we really needed at that point. So, it, you know, look, hindsight's always 20/20. I'm the first one to admit that, that, you know, that, that weighs, at least in my mind, in favor of the council having the authority to hire and fire the comptroller. But you're right, there are certainly points to be made that would say it ought to remain under the city manager. So I do see it both ways.
So he'll report up to the city manager still?
Right. Well, I appreciate the extra...
If he reports up to the...
Appreciate the extra two weeks to be able to do some more research in him, 'cause like I said, I was, I was dreading making this decision, 'cause I wasn't comfortable either way.
If he reports up to the city manager, then what is the purpose of changing it? Just to be able to hire the person?
He has the autonomy to come speak to us if there is an issue, without the fear of being fired by the city manager who may want him not to speak to us.
And I consider that a positive, because like I said, I've, I've sat through several budget meetings, and you almost got the feeling that the comptroller wanted to say something, and he didn't, because it didn't feel like that the city manager wanted him to speak.
So that's really the reason?
That's one of the things that, that I really like about it, is that they, they would, but, and to me, I think the whole success of this thing, we do that, is gonna be the personalities that are in place. I mean, if you have a weak city manager, the comptroller's gonna control everything, and if you have a weak comptroller, the city manager's still gonna control everything. So it's, to me, it's, it's...
All right.
Government's only as good as the people who are in it.
Amen.
So make the amendments and bring it back at the 20th? Is that the direction?
Yep.
All right. The next item is the revising of the city manager job description. This is something that y'all have been talking about, or at least on more than one occasion. I believe this has been Mr. Quarters, he's been the one who has been specifically revising this. If you have specific questions, I would defer those to him on what's being changed, but as I appreciate, this is what y'all requested.
Anybody got any questions?
Well, so my question is, if we approve this tonight, and then we adopt that ordinance, are we gonna have to redo this again?
Per the age of the people they did November 30, 2004, which you have certified us, the, since you made that change of the comptroller position, it was still a part of the city manager list of what we just discussed. So this job description, as you're seeing before you, addresses that as the city manager specializing in that, we have department, because it was still a department of her statute.
Plus...
Statute mandates that all city departments be supervised by...
Plus, with Mr. Burrow's clarification to the ordinance, I think it makes it abundantly clear.
Yeah, my only thing is, is I'm not sure why we're changing it, 'cause I, like I said before, I mean, I, instead of preferred college degree and some of the things that were on the older one, I mean, I think they need to remain in there. I think it needs to be required that our city manager has a degree.
You know, I'm sorry, Scott, I didn't mean to...
No, go ahead.
I, I, I think about very astute businessmen in our, our city who have run Engle Ship Building, have a very successful grocery store in town. They're very successful, and they don't have college degrees. I sure would hate to miss out on one of them.
Yeah, I agree, but, you know, but when, this job requires a lot more than just business sense, you know, it's, you know, that's part of it, but there's a lot of stuff that goes into this that I think is, is the more rounded we get, and the better off we'll be, and that's just my opinion.
Would you like to know what all changed in the current, the new one, just to keep the record? So if you look at the job description, the previous job description only records one code, Section 21-9-29. There were actually a number of statutes in the state code that should be referenced in relation to this job, that's been added to this job description. One records as far as education goes. The statute does not mandate, does the manager hold any kind of degrees, which now this does, this does conform to that. It does say it should be chosen based on the knowledge and experience of that person. However, this does say prefer on education, as you said. It also does, it also does change the fact that, you know, oftentimes, the city manager is caught on a travel and works for the city on a number of fronts, from here to DC and various places. This outlines that as well. There are also other sections of the job description that it states and converts back the code section related to this position. That's the major changes.
Correct.
Plus, in all job description, it definitely considers the department as it all exists in our current form of government, so if at the time of time, you need to update those to make sure that they do supervise the department.
But more importantly, I think what it does, Mr. Tipton, is that it brings it into, or makes it identical or complies with the current statutes in regards to the city manager form of government.
And the only other thing I would add is, is Scott, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, and if, probably in a slate of 10 candidates, I would pick somebody who had a master's in public finance or a master's in public administration, but I see it as, by saying preferred versus required, you're expanding the potential pool of applicants, and maybe you do get that sort of diamond person who does not have a college degree that, for some reason, just shines versus all the others. I'm just looking to expand the pool by saying it's preferred. That's all.
All right, any other discussion of a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the job description for the city manager as revised.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signal five, let's say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Next up, Mr. Scruggs.
Hello again. Tonight, I'm bringing forward some applications that have been submitted for the residential renewal and renovation tax exemption policy. As you recall, this is a policy that was adopted back in July of last year, and it is a policy that allows, you know, first of all, we had to go to the state legislature to actually get approval for this. We've got ability to give tax exemptions to commercial properties and historic properties, but not residential. The, we finally got this approved and adopted it last year, and there was not a lot of publication or publicity on, on the item, and there were several property owners that made application after the, after it was adopted, but before they, but after, after it was adopted, but also after they had submitted the application for a building permit. The, the policy does state that the application, you know, should've been submitted prior to the application for a building permit. As stated, this was a process, this is our first batch of them. We had five that were submitted recently, and, you know, they, they were just unaware of it. We have taken some steps to, you know, put this on a website. We've got some applications available there at the planning department to try to make this a more notable policy or program. So, you know, I provided to you the five properties that are for consideration tonight, and I would, I suggest we just talk about them, you know, kind of jointly, because I do believe once we, or you decide on what your wishes are, for one, those could very easily be for the other four. They're very, very similar in, in nature. There are some differences, I think. One, majority of them are, I think, two or three, about $300,000, and then one is up to a $600,000 house. So there is a, aside from the one that's over 600, you know, they are in that $300,000 to $400,000 price range. I'm not sure what you want to do with this as far as your recommendation, you know, as far as what you wanna do for the setting the exemptions. The policy as in place allows you to do from, you know, up 0% to 100% of municipal taxes, and it also allows you to do this for one to 10 years. So it is up for you to decide what you think is appropriate.
Um, okay. I, I'm, I like this. I was in support of it. I think it's, just having it is gonna be a useful tool, so I think we, I think we oughta encourage, you know, more people to build houses. A 100% 10 years is not something I'm on, we don't, we can't afford to do that, but I'm, I'm open for suggestions.
Let me, let me say something by way of context, sort of where I'm coming from and why I'm proposing what I'm proposing. I remember vividly the night that we adopted this, because, you know, I helped draft the statutory language to make the change, you know, talk to legislators to get it done, saw it as a need, got it done, approved it out here, and then we go back in the back for executive session, and we get hit with the audit report, 14 and a half million dollar deficit. And it struck me at that time, I knew that we were gonna have to raise taxes, or at least I felt we were gonna have to raise taxes at that point upon not only our fellow citizens, but upon every single person sitting up here at this dais. And it was tremendous disappointment for me personally, because this was something that I felt could be a tremendous benefit to our city. And I saw it particularly as a tool to market Pascagoula as a residential community, when you've got successful communities like Ocean Springs and West Mobile that seem to be building houses left and right. So I almost, in a mental sense, put this back in the back burner and, you know, say, well, maybe sometime in the future, we'll be able to bring this back. Not intending to hide it from anybody, but at the same time, didn't wanna get rid of it because of all the effort. I actually had several people that said, well, you need to just eliminate it because of this. No, I put, just speaking for me, I put too much effort into this to just abandon it now at this point. So, then, of course, we have the largest tax increase in the history of this city, and unfortunately, we have to bear the title of being the most taxed from a residential standpoint, the highest taxed city, ad valorem wise, on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. And I know everyone at this council wants to, if possible, this budget cycle, reduce those taxes. I think we've made great strides in terms of the financial health of the city. I don't think that we're out of necessarily the crisis that started over a year ago, or almost a year ago, but I, I think we've made great headway. No credit to not only the council, but to the staff. And so I'm, I'm torn between trying to do something that's, you know, fair for individuals who may not have known about the policy through no fault of their own, but at the same time, recognize that we just increased taxes in this city to unprecedented levels. And certainly encouraging substantial residential home construction is something that we want to do for Pascagoula, not only for this year, but going forward. And so after a lot of soul searching and trying to come up with alternatives on what might be a good compromise here, what I would suggest is that we grant these abatements, but we do it in a graduated form, so that, and I'm suggesting, just a pure suggestion, that we grant a seven-year abatement that would be for 10% for the first year, and then increase incrementally, incrementally by 10% every year thereafter, until year seven, it would be 70%, and then after seven years, it would end. That sounds like a lot on the end, but I think, I don't have, I do have a calculator here, but without having to use it, I think that comes out to about a 40% average, but it puts new homeowners, new home builders, in the same position that their fellow citizens are, and forces them to share the responsibility that the rest of us have to bear in terms of the higher taxes. And, you know, as we progress, and hopefully that taxes begin to come down, they then, at that point, could enjoy a higher abatement of their taxes as basically an incentive, not only to them, but other homeowners and home builders in years going forward. I don't know if this would necessarily be a precedent for everybody, you know, next year, two years, three years from now, but I think it's, it's a good compromise to try to achieve two policy goals, and one that's to be fair to our fellow taxpayers, our fellow citizens, and at the same time, incentivize individuals to build new homes here in Pascagoula. So that's, that's my suggestion. It would be 10%, starting 10% in the first year, for, and then increment, and then increase incrementally 10% every year thereafter for seven years.
So after seven years, you're at 70%?
You're at 70%, and then it ends. You're back to 100, being taxed 100%.
And you know, the abatement is on the improvement of the property. It's not on the property. So the owners are still paying taxes on the property, just like all of us are, but it's, it's an abatement for the investment they made in our community, and it, you know, that investment to be here for 30 to 50 years, and, these are my favorite words, and Councilman Parker always says them, it's a marathon, not a sprint. So if, we're looking down the road for...
And if I would, I'm sorry, if I would add one other thing, the point here is not that the city's losing something. I've heard that from a number of people, that, well, you know, you're giving away something. No, the city's actually gaining something. We're gaining the higher taxes that come from the improved residential structures that we have here, and these are not insubstantial buildings. As you pointed out, several of them are $300,000 plus. There's one that's over $600,000. At least that's the projected cost. So the city would enjoy and receive and have use of substantial tax receipts for those improvements in the first several years, but, you know, they would get the benefit of an abatement as it would increase in years five, six, and ultimately finishing in seven. So...
My, my original thought and idea of this abatement is it's gonna be an incentive. It was gonna attract people to build in Pascagoula. And just looking at it from that standpoint, I just don't see where 10% the first year's gonna give them much of anything.
And I thought about that, and Matt, that's why I'm saying, I don't know if this is a precedent. I, I'm, I'm trying to address a particular situation we've got now.
And I fully understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate that, because we do wanna, you know, be fair. Well, I would rather look at a five-year term, maybe an 80%, and reduce the term overall, but yet that still provides an incentive for somebody that's wanting to come here and build. Like you said, this is not money that we've lost. This is people that we're gonna gain. These are people that are gonna shop at our local grocery stores, our gas stations. I mean, they're gonna, you know, pay full school tax. So I just, I would be in favor of something more for a shorter period of time.
What about...
And those were my, along my lines. I mean, when I first started looking at it, I mean, I wrote down 70 to 80% for five years. I agree, I don't, I think 10 years is too long, you know, 70%, I'd, I'd be more comfortable at 70%. And that, to me, that's, that's a nice incentive for somebody to build in Pascagoula, and, but you're not just dragging it out forever. But, you know, I like the idea, you know, that, that you propose, but like I said, there's some people won't do it for 10% the first year, I guess, you know, if you're actually using it for an incentive to...
And whatever program we do pass, you guys have gotta promote it. I mean, it's gotta be something that's gonna be out there. I mean, because, I mean, a lot of these programs and stuff we pass, and it just gets put on Facebook page, and nobody ever sees it. I mean, this is something we need to make a big deal about. We've got a lot of houses being built right now, and this will add to that, and just kinda, you know, keep the momentum going, in my opinion.
It oughta put rockets on the momentum. No, I agree, I agree.
A Facebook post isn't gonna do it.
Right. I agree 100%. You've heard me, you've heard my comments about that, so...
So you need to have a really decorated corner in your office that says "taxe abatement."
It'd be on my desk.
So, so we have 10 years, Councilman Burrow, we have seven years, Mr. Till, and five years, Mr. Parker. So which one are we gonna agree with? We do not. We just, these are just figures, we throwing out?
I was throwing out seven. I mean, that was...
Well, that was you, the seven. I would have been ten years.
Yeah, I was five also.
It was five, five, and five. I said 10 is the max. I didn't, I, I, I have to say that...
It was five, seven, five. I mean, five, seven.
Seven, five, five.
Okay, five, five.
I have to say that, oh, I like the idea, as I said before, and will continue to say is, those higher ends, I like the, I like that formula. I maybe reverse it, you know, but I'm, I'm like you guys, if you're gonna make it an incentive for people to build when you're coming in, that's what you want them to see on that, on that front end. So, and I'm, I'm like them too, on a five year. I think five years is, is a reasonable amount and a very attractive, if you're doing 70% on five years.
Now, there's not a, and of course, I'm just basing it on $1,000, but just quick math, doing it Stevens way, somebody, if their taxes were $1,000, they'd pay $2,800. If you did five years, you would be at $3,500, but seven, have, have more over the five years. But 70 have, have more over the five years at 70%, but it's not a huge amount.
Like I said, I'm, all I'm trying to accomplish is trying to respect the fact that even, we all understand that we're talking about new money to the city. This is, this is not favoring certain people over others because of, you know, for whatever reason. I mean, these are people who are putting a risk in their, in our hometown by building substantial new homes, and I want to appropriately reward that, but at the same time, I want to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, we just elevated the taxes to the highest that we've ever seen. And I, and I get that that's a struggle in any sense, in any formula that we use to try to balance those two, those two considerations. So, you know, that's, that's only where I'm coming from, whether it's five years or seven years, stair step or not, I'm just trying to, to balance the concerns of those who, you know, are paying basically 100% of the taxes, and hopefully, as Matt said, I don't see this being the norm two, three, four years down the line. I would expect it to be something a little more straight line, be it 40%, 50%, whatever the number is, for five years. But I'm trying to do it in a stair step fashion, just to give, be sensitive to the fact that, you know, we did take action, we did pass a large tax increase, and I simply want to be respectful of that.
Okay, so any more discussion?
We're going to have to ask, because I'm not convinced one way. Somebody's got to bring something. I said, I'm not convinced either way right now, so we need to have some more discussion to be...
You want to table it?
Well, no.
No.
I think we can come to something, and I'm not sure if it's...
I want to offer, and I'm not sure, I, you know, I've gone back and forth with Mr. Elmore with the county. I, I don't know administratively, you know, if the tiered process is going to be a bookkeeping issue, if they can flag it to where each year it goes up 10% or down 10% or whatever it may be. I know if that's a manual effort, it would be, it could be forgotten about.
Well, I asked that very question of the Assistant City Manager this afternoon, and Frank...
We see an administrative issue with it. Unless we get ours started in to them, then Mr. Elmore, whoever takes over the, kind of involves...
Yeah.
For the government, certainly, we definitely call in and find out.
That's their job.
All right, so let's make a decision. Anybody want a concrete one here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of leaning towards a flat rate for a flat number of years, and calling it a day, and let's live with it, but, I mean...
Well, I tell you what, I'm going to split the difference between y'all two. I'll make the first motion, y'all can vote it down or not. I move that we offer a 75% tax abatement for a five-year period.
Just for clarity, I mean, y'all can handle it, sorry.
I just split the difference between them. He was 80, he was 70, 75.
And I think it's a good point to also mention that it doesn't affect the school taxes at all. They'll be paid the same rate as they always have.
If the county and their schools get their money.
Get their money.
Yeah.
These were new homeowners, everybody.
This new home, new home construction.
Real, what you...
So is there a minimum, minimum at...
Yeah, it's zero.
Zero to 100.
That's the minimum.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify.
You build a $150,000 home, you can get...
No, 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 $150,000.
Percentage is what, 150?
150.
Yeah. The minimum investment for a renovation project is 30,000. The minimum investment for new construction is 150. And that's what I was going to say, Ms. Calmer, is that...
Do we need to put that in the motion?
Well, just for clarity, yeah. I mean, is that saying that's what y'all would like to do right now? Because the policy as adopted says zero to 100 or up to 10 years. Is that going to be what y'all's understanding is for the time being until y'all change it?
Do we change it?
Do we change it?
And my assumption is that my recommendation in the future will come forward with those kind of numbers based on what y'all did previously, and anytime y'all want to change it, you can.
You want to come up and talk?
We have...
Yeah, come on.
So do we have a motion, but just for housekeeping efforts?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, and y'all going to allow this in our discussion? So we're going to do, yes, we're in discussion.
In discussion.
So I'm Chris Holtz, formerly known as Craig Holtz, up there on number two. We're building a house on Bel Air Street. And I can tell you, if you guys want to incentivize people to come build in this city and build nice homes, you have to do just what Matt said. You've got to advertise it, and you've got to make it value enough for them to say, yeah, that is an incentive to come live in the, you just said, the highest taxed city on the coast. Why do I want to do that if I'm living somewhere else? But if you advertise it and say, hey, I'm going to get a big tax break for X number of years, people might do that based on that. If you don't do it that way, you're wasting your time. I'm going to put some money in my pocket and thank you, but you're not incentivizing people. You got to, you got to think a little bit bigger. Like it's a marathon, not a sprint. It's beautiful. That's all I got to say.
I think we all agree with you. So we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to make it plain, my opposition is not to the abatement, or the process, or anything like that, but I do think that it needs to be, for this particular instance, it needs to be graduated up, starting from a lower amount. But I want to make sure nobody mischaracterizes my opposition, is that I'm against tax abatements for residential development in Pascagoula.
Well, I hope not. You're the one who...
I was going to say, you were the author of it.
I'm well aware of the irony, yes.
So the motion would be for five years at 75% until otherwise voted on by council? Okay. All right, we got a motion, our second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right.
All right, well, you've got five resolutions. How do you want to adopt those, Ryan?
I mean, if y'all have just made the decision that that's, is that what y'all would like to do, then I think you just call them up and knock them out.
Yeah.
Yeah, one by one.
Adopt a resolution for Craig Christensen for 1802 Washington Avenue for a 75% abatement for five years.
Have a motion?
We approve the abatement for Craig Christensen at 1802 Washington Avenue.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. All right, next to adopt a resolution to approve a residential tax payment for Chris Holtz at 810 Bel Air for 75% for a period of five years.
Make a motion, we approve the residential tax abatement for Craig Holtz at 810 Bel Air Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Adopt a resolution to approve a resident tax payment for Franklin Harris for 1117 22nd Street for 75% for five years.
Make a motion, we approve the residential tax abatement for Franklin Harris at 1117 22nd Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Resolution to approve residential tax payment for William Mitchell at 706 Anger Drive.
Make a motion, we approve the residential tax abatement for William Mitchell at 706 Anger Drive.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. And a final resolution to approve the tax payment for Michael and Susan Heidelberg at 1202 Washington Avenue.
Make a motion, we approve the residential tax abatement for Michael and Susan Heidelberg at 1202 Washington Avenue.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. I beat you, Scott.
Okay, next.
You know, as stated at the beginning of this, these applications were all submitted after the building permit had been issued. You know, some are almost constructed, and that is in conflict with our regulations. And in fact, early on, some of you may have gotten your ears burned or bent because initially I told some individuals that they could not apply for it because they did not meet the requirements.
I did.
I did too. So, you know, the question I want to put forth is, you know, going forward, do we want to set a window, 30, 45 days, 60 days, by which if somebody has missed the opportunity to apply, they can? Or do we want to...
A window from what, the date they apply for the permit?
Well, yeah, I've got, I mean, there's, there's, we've got 13 or 14 houses that are under construction right now. Some of those have made applications, some have not.
And they've all been notified.
I don't believe we sent notices to them about this program. I mean...
We should.
Let, let, let me, something I found out today, there are houses currently under construction who received a building, which received a building permit prior to this policy going into effect. And I, you know, look, I, they didn't, they did not build a house based on an incentive that they were going to get after the fact. I've just...
I agree, Steve. If they got it before, then I don't think legally we should be able to... I built my house in 2016, '17, and I don't expect...
That's right, where does it end? I mean, but there are houses that remain under construction...
I agree.
Where the permit was issued prior to, to the policy being passed.
Those should be excluded.
Okay, I agree with that.
So you want me to send a letter to every active new construction home that is underway that...
Have a permit issued after July 18 of 2018.
We can do that.
And give them how long?
And, yeah, I mean, it may actually be a two...
30 days.
Yeah, 30 days from the, we'll set a hard date of, you know, like July 15th or something like that, where they have at least 30 days, and go that route with it. We'll get those out tomorrow or this week. All right, next. All right. The slab...
While we're still on that, quick question. Is there any way that we can get, maybe one of you guys can reach out to WOLX? We've got a lot of new houses being built right now, more than we've had in probably 10, 15 years. I mean, that coupled with this policy, and just get them to come do something, and kind of highlight that?
Yes.
It's actually, we discussed...
We're waiting for you to make a decision.
As you, as Mr. Burrow said, we agree that's why it wasn't permitted for now, was to give my 5,000 temperature and gas at the time, whereas we're not sure how to do it forward with this, you know, I have four boxes. Now, shall we give action on this? People definitely pushing up.
You know, and just in case you didn't know, you know, we've got that program that, you know, does the $5,000 toward your building permit, toward your hookup fees, a tap fifth and all that. So you get, some people took advantage of that, but, I mean, it really is a great opportunity to, you know, build a new home here in Pascagoula.
We'll put that in the letter as well.
That, that, that is automatic.
I know, but still, it's...
Let them know they're getting it. That's a big benefit. I mean, it's three or four thousand dollars.
Still out of the ballot. All right, go, go to the next one.
All right, the next item, final item for me tonight, is the slab abatement project, which is going to address the area between Chipley subdivision and basically just west of the Country Club. 211911 is a code that we used at the beginning of this meeting to address a lot of the derelict Previous councils, you know, I know Guffport and others had tried in the past to actually remove these Katrina slabs, and were not able to do so because 211911 at that time did not allow for the removal of slabs. Slabs are not considered structures. However, I think in 16 or 17, I didn't know about this, but the rule changed, and slabs are now a permitted structure or item that can be removed through 211911. And I think I attached the map of this area in the program, but, you know, just in this area that we referenced, there's like 55 slabs that are, that have been sitting there since Katrina. And it's, you know, I've talked to a number of people, you know, one individual said, well, it's a slab, but I bought the adjacent lot, and now I'll park my boat there. Well, you know, they maintain it, you know, that's probably a battle of juice, and we definitely don't want to remove a slab that's being used in those kind of situations. But that's not typical. You know, the majority of slabs we have out there are on lots that are overgrown and are, you know, cannot be reused. With the elevation, you know, in this particular area, you know, requirement is that you elevate your home, you know, 13 feet in the air, in some cases, 10 feet in the air, that slab underneath your, that's sitting there right now, you know, cannot be reused for those kind of purposes. So it's not like they're going to be able to take this and reuse it. You know, we sent out letters last week to kind of start this program into ball rolling. What we really, really want to do is to put the owners on notice, and hopefully, they will take the initiative to do this on their own. I've talked to property owners, who's saying, you know, are you going to do my driveway? Are you going to do just my slab? You know, my position is, if you've got nothing but a driveway on your site, that's not a slab, and it does not meet the requirements of 211911. However, if you have a slab, you know, chances are, we are going to take your driveway, and we will also take, we'll also clean the lot. I mean, if the lot's overgrown, we're going to use it to the full force. So if you, you know, in everybody's best interest, and we're going to be more expensive, I mean, you know, we bid this as a complete package, whereas, you know, chances are, if you get a private contractor who is doing a number in the area, then, you know, he may be able to lump you in with the other three or four he may be doing, and you may get a better rate. But, you know, we bid our numbers, and ours are going to be, you know, what they are.
Well, what if I go park my boat on my driveway while you're tearing up my slab? Because what if I want my driveway? I mean, that's, I can still use my driveway again. That doesn't have to go up in the air. Why would you tear up the driveways? That's not a slab.
The, the, I mean, if the slab is being, if you can, if the property owner can show me some reasons why the driveway needs to be there, then, you know, we can, you know, definitely work with individuals. We don't expect this to be across-the-board process. I mean, everybody's got different reasons.
Well, what if it's just that I go cut my yard every two weeks or every week, and I park on the driveway? I don't want to park in the mud or in the grass. I don't want to ruin my yard, and I want my driveway there. Are they going to get the opportunity to talk to you about, hey, please don't tear up my driveway?
Anybody can talk to me or the Code Enforcement Officers about this. We plan to have those conversations, you know, but, you know, what we have are hundreds of properties in this town that people are saving for, I'm going to reuse my foundation, or I'm going, and it's gotten us absolutely nowhere, you know. So, I mean, if somebody's got an immaculate yard, and they're maintaining it, we can tell they go there on a regular basis and do it, they're really not a code enforcement item. But if we see a property that's got a derelict slab and a driveway, then, you know, chances are, we're going to remove both of them.
Then my cutting yard theory doesn't work.
No, because, you know, most yard guys park on the road anyway.
Let me ask...
Well, I was just going to ask him, the 211911 that you're quoting, what is that, and where does it come from?
That's the public menace statute. That's the same statute that you use for everything else, yeah. And I'll, if I may, kind of, Donovan, if you, if you don't mind.
Yep, that's right.
This actually is something that had been brought to Donovan in my attention by Dr. Howe Moore months ago. It was on an email, and at that time, it was our understanding that even though slab was listed within 211911... I'm sorry. At that time, we were kind of still leery as to whether or not to do it, because it's not better to ask forgiveness than permission when you start tearing up people's slabs. However, after seeing, I think it was Diamondhead, I saw an article a few weeks ago, sent it to Diamond on Friday night, and that kind of spurred the conversation. We spoke to lawyers out of Jackson about this, who we usually throw things off for, for municipal issues.
Did they put that opinion in writing?
It's not in writing, no, Mr. Burrow. But I haven't found anything in writing that says that you cannot, so...
There are at least...
How the slab...
I don't think it is either.
No, it's part of, as he said, if it's on it, and I mean, look, there are tons of exceptions, and we probably can go back and forth on this all night, but the focus will initially be on those that are the same ones, these overgrown lots that are derelict. initially be on those that are the same ones, these overgrown lots that are derelict, is the word that a lot of people like to throw out there. So, I mean, look, you will be getting these coming to you, Donovan's not, tonight is asking for you to say, "Go ahead," and you won't get the opportunity to look at those names and those individuals for which he's gonna recommend, okay? The statute requires that, essentially, yes, except, except you're gonna get a ton of them, I would think, pretty quickly.
Yeah, and it's like, you know, I spoke to a property owner today, and he said, "I really wanna, you know, I don't care about the slab so much, but I really wanna keep my driveway," and my suggestion was, him was, then, you know, if you wanna be in control of your property and the process, then it'd be better for you to hire a contractor and do it on your own, because that's, if the city takes, you know, gets involved in it, you know, we're going to, we're not gonna be able to really oversee once we turn a contractor loose. It would be a lot easier to, for somebody to have control of what happens, you know, if they wanna save a slab, save your driveway, then go ahead and remove the slab, and we'll move it off the list. It will not be on the list, it will not come to this body, we'll leave you alone, but if the slab stays there, you know, we're going to address it in public forum, but tonight, all fifty-five or whatever's left.
Well, but, but Scott, I mean, Scott, you know, stole my thunder. I, I mean, I understand twenty-one nineteen eleven, and it requires us to determine that a property be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, and I, and I'm not saying that we need, we don't need to remove slabs, I think it's long overdue, but I'm just thinking, how do we fit, how do we fit this into twenty-one nineteen eleven? I would expect some dedicated opposition from somebody, for whatever reason, saying that, "Well, a piece of concrete that does not elevate above the ground, it's not a hazard, I keep it mowed, there's no other problem with the yard," saying, "How is this a menace?" And I'm simply saying that aloud, not for you to answer it tonight, but I think you need to be prepared to answer that question in appropriate circumstances, whether it's here, or, you know, if somebody decides to appeal from an adverse decision from this council, so, I just simply kinda put it back at you, for you and your staff to put your heads together to figure out how does, how do we say a slab in and of itself is a menace?
Can I answer?
Sure.
Snakes, rats, things that live when the yard is not maintained? Let me just show you the snake that entered my yard.
I'm talking about a situation where a yard is maintained, what if the yard...
Well, we're not gonna be going after ones where the yard is maintained.
Look, now, I mean, I think the spirit of the statute basically says, and Stephen's correct, I mean, it's a detriment or to the public health, safety, and welfare, my argument would be similar to what Ms. Calmer just said, if there is just a slab, and someone goes and cuts their grass every day, and you're not worried about it, and one that comes to my mind, and I don't know if there's a slab on it or not, but there's a corner of Parsley and whatever, there are a couple of those that we always have to clean, what we've been prevented from doing is when we go out there to cut the grass, which I think everyone will agree, is from also tearing up the slab, so at this point, it would allow you to do that. I mean, I don't think the statute was designed for you to just go start tearing up slabs.
Yeah, but, I mean, we're not the only city on the coast that's had this issue, I mean, everybody is, has been, or should have been, in the slab removal process after Katrina. I mean, fourteen years after Katrina, and we still have slabs, I just think it makes the city look terrible, and I think that the slab should have been removed before now, but...
Do we have the money to go remove these slabs?
Yes. He hasn't spent the money that he has.
But I like, I like the idea of, I mean, we, we all got pounded coming in that we're gonna clean the city up, that was, that was one of the biggest things we all ran on, so...
If you're trying to incentivize, you know, and make people wanna live here, it's not exactly a welcoming thing to ride down and look at a slab.
Well, and it's not...
We can't take the law into our hands and go do anything we want to just 'cause we think some, that...
But, I mean, it's not that, Mr. Tipton, I mean, state legislature approved this slab removal for cities along the Gulf Coast specifically because of the issue we're having with this. I mean, it's not, I mean, it would have been taking the law into our hands in the last administration when it was not allowed.
So, when we get sued, we'll be able to turn it over to the legislature, let the state handle it?
Of course not. They'll be ready to defend us.
The other thing is, will this, will this address some of our drainage, you know, that aren't capped off? Will we be able to maybe find some of those drains that aren't capped off? Yeah, but, you know...
Well, most of those slabs aren't capped, I mean, you can't go on the property and cap one of those.
Most of those slabs are not capped, actually removing a slab really probably will not identify it because the way that we address them are at the property line anyway, so if you're taking a slab out of the middle of a lot, that might be totally be open, whether you cap it at the property line or not.
But now you know it's open, so we can go to the street and cap it off.
Yeah, so why can't you?
We can do that today, you guys have already approved, that's a matter of resources to chase down and do it, but we can do that today.
I was just trying to find another part of the...
So, so...
It'll be mine, I'll let that as an item.
I can add a comment or two, because I was in not in the spot before this was eligible, and some of the approaches I tried to take, I think are reasonable, is if you have a slab that has frost, as much tile on it, with oil, wood on it, the slide, or any other things, if there's anchor screws sticking up, those are attractive nuisances for people to get to, if you have a slab that's more than two feet, then it's a falling hazard, it's a danger, there's a lot of things about a slab that do make them attractive nuisances, but if they're clean and the yard's cut...
Well, Jackie, that's what I'm talking about, I mean, I, I don't, I'm concerned that simply having a slab is not a public nuisance, but there may be aspects about a given slab, like you said, there may be studs left over, you know, those foot studs, I can't even remember, toe studs, that have nails sticking up at them, there may be glass, there may be shattered tile that may be a nuisance, I'm just, I'm throwing this question out there because I don't know if a twenty-foot by thirty-foot piece of concrete in the middle of a vacant lot is by itself a nuisance, so I'm just, I'm just prompting the conversation is what I'm trying to do.
But I do agree, it's a good thing for the city because it'll clean it up, make it look better.
And, and we know for sure, every time one of those slabs torn up, we can cut the water off at the gas line, and we stop that much more, aye and aye. Salable.
Alright, so... Really, I'm just, you know, I'm just gonna start the, letters are already going out, we've already got...
Yeah, those are letters are already going out.
We know, we found out the hard way. Next time you send out a big letter like that, maybe you could let us know first.
Alright, next is City Engineer.
I'm gonna try not to take as much time as Donovan has tonight. I, we brought to you a proposal for robotics, to do some street mapping evaluation and whatnot, on a recent meeting, we tabled it for discussion at the workshop, and then that was brought again to this meeting today for discussion. When we were initially developing that proposal, we had reached out to a number of providers, a number of potential customers, including Jackson County, about similar services, and had not been able to find information that indicated that what the county was going to enter into satisfied our interests. As we continued to investigate it, it turns out, we just didn't have enough information, it was not that they were not providing the information we were looking for, we met with them more intensely, talked through what information is available, what kind of schedule they were looking at, and how it would be shared with the cities, and it does appear that with just a little bit of clarification between the city and the county, as far as what information would be made public and at what levels, they are in fact getting all the information that we're looking for, and so, since we're gonna get that information on a timeline that's comfortable for us, my recommendation at this point is to not follow through with the robotics proposal, but to gain that information from the county and work with them for the information that we were looking for, so, my recommendation is to drop that proposal unless y'all have a strong interest not to.
Sound good to me?
Okay.
Alright, next is the docket of claims. Alright, is there a motion to approve docket of claims? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Mayor, Council Adams, anybody got anything? I do. I wanna say, tonight, Donnie Carlson, come here, chief, tonight is Donnie's last night here, so, congratulations. Congratulations on your retirement. Did a good job, we're gonna miss you, and I hate you retiring, but I've been there, and I, I understand it.
Yeah. Congratulations. Yeah, I'm in to Sparkville County, South Carolina.
Good.
I'll be the fire chief over a newly created fire department. They bought the, brought together three volunteer departments, but one paid department, and so, the first task began to be hiring full-time staff when I get there in July one.
Well, if you take any of our firemen, we're coming to get you.
No, I don't think they wanna come all that way.
Well...
That's a bit of an opportunity I had here, and I really did appreciate it, and hope I'm leaving it better than I found it, so...
There's no question you have, and I appreciate your time and service, so, we're here for you, if you need anything, thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Done a hell of a job, good job. Alright, now, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you coming tonight, but we need to go into executive session, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to consider a need for executive session.
So moved.
Okay.